May ninth meeting of the Wayne Planning, welcome to the May ninth meeting of the Wayne Planning Board. Did anyone have? Does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss about the minutes, or do I have a motion for approval? Of last month's?
I make a motion we approve the minutes from last meeting.
Any seconds?
I second that one.
All in favor? And I think because we are short members tonight, Jeanie, you will be a voting member tonight. Thank you.
Excuse me, would you be willing to take minutes tonight or notes?
Is anyone?
We're short a person for that, too.
Good. Thank you, Jean. All right, first order of business. On the agenda is the public hearing for the Jellystone Campground application. In relation to this, I'm going to ask the legal counsel Jim Katsipikas to explain the procedure for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Chip Earl and members of the board. At the last meeting, I was absent, but Brandon Mason from my office was here and he filled me in on what happened. So I understand that the board determined that the application of Sun Energy Beaverbrook for Shelley Stone Park expansion was found to be complete. And ready for processing. So at that point, a public hearing was scheduled for tonight. But there've been some events at one in particular since then. There was an election, a special town meeting that was held on April sixteenth. And at that special town meeting, the voters of Wayne voted of one hundred sixty-nine to twenty, as I understand, to enact the citizen petition Town of Wayne Moratorium Ordinance, RV Park and Campground Developments. Now, we, the town then received a letter from council for the Andersgagen Lake and improvement corporation asking the planning board to cease further review of the Jellystone Park application until expiration of the moratorium. So I have reviewed that moratorium ordinance, of course, I'd seen it before, but we reviewed it in light of its passage and asked council for ALEC and also for Jellystone to discuss it, to talk about what it meant. Because, you know, the language has to be reviewed carefully and. So I asked them, what does this mean for the ongoing application process? And then what's the timing of the land use ordinance amendment process? Assuming that this is in effect, that the moratorium affects this application, what do we do next? So the moratorium ordinance, I've seen many of you have seen it, since so many voted on it. And what it does is, at the end of its recitals, it declares and imposes a moratorium prohibiting the processing or issuance of development permits or licenses for RV parks or campgrounds within the town. Now, generally, when there's a new ordinance change and there's new legislation, it's prospective from this point forward. It doesn't affect things that already had occurred or applications that had been filed. But there is a state statute with regard to that, which allows for or has been interpreted to permit retroactive legislation. Legislation that affects things that happened before enactment. And indeed, in this moratorium ordinance, there are two provisions that deal with retroactivity and make this moratorium ordinance retroactively applicable to this application, to any application filed on or after the date that it was proposed. Now, the ordinance as adopted does not state the date that was proposed, but I think we council all agree that the most reasonable date to use for that would be January nine of two thousand and twenty-four. That's the date that the petition with the moratorium language and correct number of valid signatures were all brought before the clerk and the town clerk was able to validate that petition. So it's, we deem this, I think, all legal counsel for the, for ALEC, for the campground, for the town are in agreement that this is retroactively effective to January nine, retroactively, correctly, applicable, I want to be careful, to January nine of two thousand and twenty-four and therefore affects this application. What this means is that my advice to this board is that you move to table further action on this application until moratorium and any extension of it has expired. Now, moratorium is good for a hundred eighty days initially, when the voters adopt it or the town adopts a moratorium, it has a duration of one hundred eighty days. At the end of that hundred eighty days, or as it's about to expire, the select board has the authority to extend it for additional up to one hundred eighty day periods. In order to do that, the select board has to be able to find that the problem giving rise to the need for the moratorium still exists and that reasonable process and progress is being made to alleviate the problem giving rise to the need for the moratorium. Because the moratorium applies retroactively, it began to operate as of January nine, so we're about halfway through that hundred eighty day moratorium period. And so on or by July nine, in order for the moratorium to continue, the select board would have to vote to continue it. Remember this, though, and this is as much to the public as to the board. This is a moratorium and moratorium means a delay in the processing of an application. It doesn't mean that it's been denied or banned or prohibited. This is a delay in the review and it's a delay that's intended to allow the town to address the issues that were raised in the enactment of the moratorium. The moratorium preamble cites inadequacies of local ordinances, inadequacies of local infrastructure to address or to allow this type of development. And so it's time now for the select board to direct how the town will address those. So what I suggest is a twofold motion, and I've got it prepared and I'll pass this out to you. I recommend that the planning board move one, that as directed by, sit down please, Chip. As directed by the Town of Wayne Moratorium Ordinance, RV Park and Campground Developments enacted on April sixteen, two thousand and twenty-four by the voters of the Town of Wayne, the planning board hereby tables indefinitely further action on the Jellystone Park Site Plan Application filed with the town on or about January eighteen, two thousand and twenty-four until the expiration or repeal of that moratorium ordinance and of any extension of it. So that's the first part, table this matter until the moratorium ordinance and any extension is expired. And two, that the planning board requests the select board to provide direction in addressing the ordinance and public facility inadequacies cited in the moratorium. You can't, no one's, no one's trying to tell the select board what to do, but just suggesting to them, it's time for them to give direction, whether it's to this board, stakeholder group, or however they decide they want to address it. But if they're going to take a vote, they need to show that they are making reasonable progress for resolving underlying problems that were cited. And only do that by starting to take some action. So that's the motion that I've prepared as a draft for this evening. I hope no one would be upset with the fact that the advertised public hearing wouldn't be heard because there will be no public hearing because the application would be tabled. But that's the, that's, that's my advice for this evening. Any questions for the board?
I have one.
Yes.
So during this time, from now till July ninth and then possibly another hundred and eighty days, what is the select board doing? Are they meeting with lawyers? Are they meeting with environmental folks? And meanwhile, what are the other guys doing?
Well, I don't know what the select board would be doing. But the idea behind the moratorium, its proponents say that there are inadequacies in the ordinances and inadequacies in public facilities that mean that this cannot be managed. So the idea of this timeout, this delay, this moratorium is to permit those inadequacies to be addressed. And so it would be appropriate for the select board to explain, to set up a process or to outline a process for those inadequacies to be addressed during this tendency of the moratorium. So that that way, if there are ordinance changes that come out of the process, they can go to this board for a recommendation and then to town meeting.
Thank you. And one last question. At the risk of learning in public, but I made a successful career of doing that. Would you explain to me again, how, how does going back in time, for lack of better words, or retro? How does that work? How was that legal fair? I mean, it just, it, it.
I understand.
To me, it's, to me, it's a perception issue. And if you don't manage the perception, you usually end up managing the consequence. So I don't understand that, and I'm not troubleshooting you, but just.
I understand.
Please educate me.
Sure. And I think, you know, the problem came up in some recent election questions where there were questions whether it's even legal to have retroactive legislation or how terrible it is. So let's talk about that for a minute. Generally, law's going to affect from here on.
Yes.
Here forward, you know, it becomes effective the next day and it applies to anything that happens after that. The question is, what happens if someone's in the pipeline already? Is it fair to change the law on that person? And the general rule is that if you've had, if the planning board is starting to look at the substance of your application, doing more than just determining, yeah, the application's complete or, you know, you need to submit five more things in order for us to even think about looking at it. It's at that phase, it's not complete and it's fair to apply the new law to it. But if you've been determined complete and the planning board is starting to look at the substance of your application, do you meet standards? At that point, generally, your application is going to be under the old law. Your rights are going to be fixed under the law that was in effect. And that's generally what would happen unless you specify that the magic language, notwithstanding one, Title One, main revised statutes, section three oh two, this is effective retroactive, this is applicable, it requires retroactive. And then you set out how far back it's going to be retroactive. There was a case involving Kittery Retail Ventures where the, the town, the townspeople put on an initiated measure that retroactively went a year and a half back to before they even submitted their application. It already gotten the permit. The town went retroactive to their submission of the application a year and a half early and determined that it would be, that they were going to change the law retroactive to that date. So they actually undid a permit, undid approval and approval. And it was upheld by the state's green board. The legislature has changed that law. Now you can only go back forty-five days from the date of vote for someone who's actually gotten a permit to take their permit away. But you can go back retroactively further to affect applications that are in the pipeline. That's happened here and it's lawful, it's been upheld. We're all taking chances when we apply for things. We're all, you know, there's a risk. And one risk is that someone might appeal your approval or that you might not get your approval. Another risk is that it could be, it could retroactively be undone. Unless you have vested rights in it by having in good faith started construction and invested lots of money and put things in the ground. You don't, it's very hard to undo that, but to contest that.
Thank you for the explanation. Much appreciated. Okay. So we have Jim's motion before us. And so obviously our are clear that we don't have to accept Jim's motion. We can do whatever we think is best. It's my opinion that, given that the moratorium itself is outside of our purview, it's not for us to decide whether we think it is either correct or legal or anything. And that our counsel is advising us that we should abide by the moratorium. Then my inclination is to follow our counsel's advice. Given that I am not a voter. Those are my thoughts. Do people have other thoughts? Sorry. Basically, I said that we have to, we have to do, decide whether we are going to follow counsel's advice, which we are not bound to do. We can make whatever decision we wish. But that, given that it is not within our purview to decide whether the moratorium is legal or will be upheld, it is likely to be upheld or is fair or anything like that, that I am inclined to respect our counsel's advice and make the motion that he proposed. And I asked the board for their thoughts. Or you don't have to have thoughts, but does anyone have thoughts?
No, I appreciate the explanation and I would do you, Andrew. You can always stand.
Okay, my training is, I, I, I think two or three terrain features down the road, two or three moves down the road. That's just how my brain works. This is a huge legal bill. That's what this is. And to fund that legal bill, I, I, I don't know if we can print more money at the town hall. But practical me, who used to rub two nickels together to buy three Musketeers from Mr. Mullen, I, I just, this is. But we're going to go on for a while. And their guys are going to meet our guys and we're going to go back and forth and, Andy, the bills are going to pile up and they're going to have to be paid. And I wish Dave Stevenson were in the room right now, but I, I, I just. I, I, this is, this is a big bill.
So I I definitely understand the cost concerns, like, you know, we had multiple positions from our local schools up for the chopping block. You know, the town's not made of money. We, there's lots of things the town could do with this money besides paying legal fees to, to work on this, but unfortunately, that is not within our, it is not within our purview. If that decision were to have been made, it would have been made by the select board or the voters. It's my understanding is it would be fairly out of left field for the planning board to not uphold the moratorium based on cost concerns. I totally understand where you're coming from. I just don't think that falls within our legal purview. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Right. It doesn't. And I can appreciate, I'm kind of frugal myself and don't want to see money spent unnecessarily. But here's the thing. Right now, there's a moratorium that is providing some time for the town to work with the parties to look at what needs, what could be fixed in the ordinance. Perhaps something that might address the issues for both sides. You could go ahead right now and if you grant the permit, you will wind up in court. And if you deny the permit, you will wind up in court. And if you do not respect the moratorium, you would possibly be wind up in court as well with an injunction. So right now, this buys some time without necessarily involving lawyers or the town and the parties to try to work things out through possible amendments to the ordinance. So I would view it more as a plus than, than as a cost, to the extent that cost is a concern and it isn't. That's for the select board to have to deal with.
Thank you. And Andy, I mean, it's just, just among us, I mean, I planning board member Doug, I get it. I know the ordinances, I know the issues. Taxpayer Doug, who also wears a hat at this table. The lawyer wins.
I mean, you also don't have to vote the way I recommend.
He just very eloquently laid out what's behind door number one, two and three.
I'd like to, I'd like to say I respect what our associate has to say. I think he's, Doug's right. We have to look at all the issues involved, but when I look at hundred and sixty-nine to twenty, to me, that's an obvious reason that the, at least the people that voted and they're the ones that seem to be interested in the, in the topic at hand in this moratorium. That's a big difference. If it was closer, I might be more reluctant than I am now to say that we should go ahead with the suggestion by the attorney.
Yeah, I mean, I would personally venture that regardless of the voters, still really the select board's purview and it would be probably dangerous for us to, legally dangerous for us to take a position on it.
I moved. That is directed by the Town of Wayne Moratorium Ordinance, RV and Campground Developments enacted on April sixteen, two thousand and twenty-four by the voters of the Town of Wayne. The planning board hereby tables indefinitely further action on the Jellystone Park Site Plan Application filed with the town on or about January eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-four until the expiration or repeal of the moratorium ordinance and of any extension of it. And furthermore, that the planning board requests the select board provide direction in addressing the ordinance and public facility inadequacies cited in the moratorium ordinance.
Do we have a second? I second that motion.
Good. All in favor? Passed. So there will be no public hearing tonight, no public comment on the issue. We will close the Jellystone, we will table the Jellystone issue until the moratorium is either expired or repealed. And next on the agenda, we're going to talk about accessory development units and affordable housing. And this is a public meeting, not a hearing. You're welcome to stay and listen if you are interested in the ADU ordinances. But there will be no public comment, although we'd be no further discussion of Jellystone tonight.
All right. Give everybody about five minutes to, if you're leaving, leave. Otherwise, we'll get going. Everybody's in their place.
I mean, thank you, Chip. Thank you.
Well organized. Thank you. Would anybody like a printed copy of the newest? They're only half printed.
I was going to say, because I printed the whole thing.
So are you going to give a presentation?
Okay, guys, this could be quick. This could take time. Let's try to get it going. I explained to you last time we were here that we had to get this done. In that time, I realized that we had to do something. And so I went ahead, like I've told you the story. I borrowed from our sister town, what was done by them, their consultants, their lawyers. Six weeks of meeting and.
Excuse me. If you're still in the room, please be quiet so the people online can hear Chip speaking and that we can hear. If you'd like to discuss, please step outside of the building. Good. Thanks.
All right. So we had a good footprint, how to move forward. So I took that after a lot of hard work by both Doug and Ed. And I took the ball at the thirty yard line and utilized a distilled piece from theirs that outlined where the changes were made and what they were that would address the ADU affordable housing issue from LD two thousand and three. Spent quite a few hours on it, figure out where things fit in, where they didn't, where cross references should be changed and came up with this. And I think most of you have received it, one copy of the other. Real quickly. The game plan was to do this. Then the game plan was to have some people overlook it. General Code, who's doing us our overall review, did us a favor and they said, okay, we'll take a look at it this weekend. They looked at it. They were happy, gave a thumbs up. They gave me a list of, would you pass these around? Things that I had to change. There was cross references and things. And that's their job. So I was really happy to see it. But they, they were kind in their words and they allowed for me to go in and do some changes. After that, I ran it by our town attorney. I ran it by our town attorney. He did the same exercise. He only came up with three items, which I have corrected and that's been finished. Then I took it to the select board and gave them. Then I took it to the select board and gave him. The thumbnail, which is this has to be done, or by June sixteenth, we're not going to have our own version of it. And if we, this is the result, if we don't get this done. It's gonna be that we're open to a lot of things. This way we have it incorporated in our L U O. With some of the guidelines that we can do and so forth. Um, I also implored them last night or the night before last, whenever we had the meeting. As I'll implore to you and you guys, this is only about a mandate from the state of Maine. To incorporate their rules on our, um, official. Auxiliary dwelling units, affordable housing, and there's been a change in mobile homes. That's all this is about. It's not about what we were listening to before. And it's not about the overall work that General Code's doing for us, which will probably be completed in January. This is just what they asked us to get done. And we've actually had three years to get it done. Deadline last year came up, we hadn't get it done. Many towns, smaller ones didn't. So they gave another year. This is it. Lot of work and I'm hoping, you know, everybody gets to take a look at it. Um, hope the board gets to take a look at it. We got a thumbs up from the select board the other night. So, um, reviewed by CEO, General Code, Select Board, Lawyer. So there's been a lot of reviews. So that being said, knowing our, you know, deadline, the deadline now is. Is if you all are in agreement, this looks good, it works, not just my eyes, but others have reviewed it. I would like to ask for a vote to, uh, go to a public hearing. I have to notice that I couldn't do it concurrently. And so I'm gonna also ask you to schedule a time sometime two weeks and a day or two from now. So we can meet, I think the first time we can is the twenty-third in a public hearing. Again, that would invite the public, we do the same thing. Um, and then hopefully, hopefully, at that public hearing. We get through, everybody understanding what's going on. You get to vote on it, then it would have to go. There's only one select board meeting after that. And then they'd have to take a look at it. I gave them the preview and they were like, just bring us back your, you know, ruling from the planning board. Once that's done, they assign it to a warrant for the town meeting, which is coming up soon, June twelfth, June thirteenth. He left, okay. So that's the process. Go through that. Then we have an amended L U O. We're done. Lot of pressures off of everybody. And. So everybody knows, once that's done, General Code, who's doing the overall rewrite. Reararrangement of all the discrepancies in the L U O. The different other ordinances we have in town, they were gonna help us out. Guys, can we just get through this? Excuse me. Um. Lost my train of thought, great. They'll come back, it'll be, it'll have public hearings on that. We'll have a whole bunch of things going on, charrettes and things. Uh, at the end of that, hopefully we'll have a codified, a lot of things fixed up that will address a lot of the problems. You all seen, I've seen, and hopefully we'll have a product that'll be very pleasing, very easy to use, very complete. Historically and by state rules sometime around the first of the year. But for right now, this is what's gotta get done. We've got hard copy here. Uh, I can take you through what's been done since you got your first copy. Um, if it's okay with you guys. So majority of the changes to meet the state. Guidelines are in section three, which are the tables of uses. Saying in, you know, every zone, you know, is it allowable? If it's allowable, who hears it? Code officer or the planning board, or is it just period, you know, it's just play it all out, yes or no? It it is, does it need a permit or no, it does? Doesn't, can't do it. Um, that's the. Chapter three, article. Article two, forgive me, article two, that's where the majority of you'll see on page. Starting on page nine, I guess, where you see in red what changes. Then you go on to the next part, art, stop me, because I go quick. Um, article three. Which is the, um, setbacks for lots and in the different zones. And as you know, anybody that's bought a house or has a house, there's side, front setbacks. And there's a maximum, uh, there's a minimum lot size, and this lays this all out. And explains in the footnotes. For certain areas, what it means if they wanna put in a auxiliary dwelling unit. Which is gonna be allowed now on most properties if they can meet setbacks and also shoreline regulations. Um, that's all in this, uh, article three chart. And we didn't have many footnotes before, but the footnotes, every small number you see up there is footnoted here. Explaining why that's being done and how it's being done. The meat of the review or changes are in article. Four. And in article four, you see right in the beginning, it's defining, it used to be titled dwelling units and conversions. Now it's, um. I don't have the N thing, but it's allowing, it's defining what all of this means in terms of. Two family dwellings, new dwellings, conversions, um. So where that was before has been supplanted with, uh. Various areas, single family dwellings, two family dwellings, new and conversion, conversion, reconstruction of multifamily dwellings. And it goes through basically what the state said we're required to do now. And that goes through on two pages, and this is the marked up one. I think you guys have a cleaner version than I do. So I've tried to show you where things are. The other changes are quite minor, um. In article six, Q one, is the, um. What we did tiny houses, tiny homes, we did that a while back. Well, in the tiny homes one, it used to say manufactured homes didn't count. Well, they do now. Okay, because there's also something else in here from the state that said new definition of what's allowed. In towns, uh, in every zone or district. And that is that first it redefines, uh, mobile homes and manufactured homes. It says mobile homes are manufactured homes and should be allowed. That's the way it is. So I had to take out the restriction and again, article six, Q one. That allows, uh, manufactured homes, um, as a tiny home. Um. Part two. Article one got that, that was indefinite. In the definitions, we had a. Part two, article one is definitions and construction of language. And there's a couple of changes there, um, with the tiny homes. With accessory dwelling units, affordable dwelling dwelling units. And there was one that's right at the beginning of part two, um, section one. You'll see it defines auxiliary dwelling units, affordable housing units. And then I also had in there, um. One brand new definition, and that's for buffer buffers and screening. We should have had there in a long time ago, because a lot of things we do, we rule with, you have to have buffers and screening for things. So I borrowed on that, and that's a new definition under definitions. So that was a lot of words, a lot of things, been a lot of blood, sweat and tears. It's in your hands, so I, I, I will take questions.
Yeah, I'm looking at my notes from back in February with you, me and Ed, um. And I know a lot's gone on since then. I know we had, we were up against the deadline, got it, because we drew out the timeline.
Right.
Do we still, are we still having the pros come in and look at our stuff with the, with the grant money?
Okay, that grant money was given from the state to do this. We expanded it to do the whole L U O. It's all paid for. What I did was I asked a favor of that, that group.
Okay.
And they gave the town a, uh, a free pass.
Well done.
And they've checked it out. So they've checked it out. A different, uh, consulting group called North Star. All right, they've checked it out, them and their lawyers. That's where a lot of this came from. Our attorney Phil Saucier, over the last four days, did an expedited review. Now Phil came up with some other things which have been fixed since. And I'll give those to you now.
So these have been included in the last version.
The version I, I said that you have now.
Yeah.
I'll give you the one I gave you. I can, I'll have to resend it to you because the back part was cut off of this one.
Yeah, I'd appreciate. Don't send us anymore until we got it completed.
Well, this will be complete. You guys are gonna vote to go to, as any application. Okay, in a meeting, you're gonna vote to move forward to a public hearing, okay? You will have full. Packages for that. Okay, and I'll make sure that, um.
Chip, I just want to clarify one thing before you go in further, and I, and I appreciate all the work that's been done and you've done it. Many of us, we're not just, but that's. Probably good. You had a professional come in. I appreciate you doing that. What I'm wondering is, we're gonna have a public hearing. Hopefully within a couple of weeks, is that correct? At that point, the public can raise questions about. Um. Things that might be, would we then be able to make any changes to this after the public hearing?
Absolutely. I mean, again, this is pretty black and white. It really is.
And still meet the timeframes that we have to meet?
Yeah, definitely can, we can, uh, we can hear the public if there's anything serious problem or whatever, and it's. Not something that we can, you know, it's something that we can do.
Yeah.
Then we can, uh, pass it, um, as amended at the meeting.
Okay, good.
Again, we've been told we gotta do this. Again, we've had three years to get this stuff in there. Granted that the state has changed it a bunch of times on us. Granted, they moved the deadline on us. But they're very serious, uh, in terms of having this in there and. It's a good cause. I'm not sure if this will accomplish it, you know, again, affordable housing, more housing units. But it's what they said gotta be done, much along the lines of what your lawyer heard, told you earlier. We gotta do it, so.
Well, it did, it said, actually, you don't have to do it. If you don't do it, they're gonna enact it anyway.
Well, they're gonna enact it in their flavor. This allows you to enact it with your land use ordinance. And cross reference it and have your, you know. Any other questions?
Um. You say, oh, I have, I have a bunch. Um, can we, yeah, go and move into like a discussion?
That's where you are.
I yield. Um, so first question is the latest electronic, uh. I didn't quite understand. The latest electronic version that I received, did it contain all of these amendments?
Those were just, those were the ends of the reviews, so I think it might contain. I'm pretty sure it contains the general code one, that was the longer sheet. The other one I received from Phil Saucier overnight, um, he suggested three changes, all were. You don't really have to do this, but I'd suggest doing it.
Okay.
And I did with, uh, item one. Which was, uh, dwelling year conversions.
Yep.
Um, we have to allow it in all. According to the state, we have to allow these things in all our district zones. So I took out one restriction. The second one was interesting is that, uh. They, part of this, developers get bonus points if they wanna put in, you know, a development or whatever. And. It's for designated growth area. We have two designated growth areas in town. And, but it says also, or served by a public. Special district or other centrally managed water system and septic system. Well, we don't have that in this town. So we don't really have to amend it. And I spoke to him today to clarify, and he goes, yeah. If you don't have a water system or septic system, just go with what you got. So that what I took the pass on.
Yeah, I mean, he says here, in the event that such a city would ever construct, but that seems.
But you never know. Auxiliary dwelling units, um, uh, there was a question about where they're, uh, allowed. I originally had none should be allowed in the stream protection of resource protection, uh, but our, our. Land use ordinance, uh, allows, you know, housing, uh. Dwelling units in those zones under some strict rules, so you can't not allow it for affordable units, so. Again, um, if we allow it, it's gotta be allowed, and so I took that restriction out too.
Great, thank you.
This is like other things we've dealt with before, shoreline, um, and other things from the state. You can alter these, but you can't alter these to dodge. The effect they're supposed to have. I used to say you can't alter it, make them, you know, more difficult or more easy. But it's, you gotta, if you wanna alter it, it has to. Serve the purpose that this was put in. The purpose this was put in was for more living units, to serve more people. And the purpose that was put in there is, you know, for affordable housing to be spread around the state. You know, we can amend it going down. These are just, this will be the newest version of the L U L. Things will change and things will be amended, so.
I have a list of questions. Does anybody mind if I go through them? I don't know if other people have this as well.
Good.
Um. So some of these are just for my clarification. First one, I noticed in the article, in the table of contents in article five, we had, we got. Um. Three new sections, I'm assuming this is just because.
New definitions.
Like the subject waste disposal, subject, three, three sections, L N N O, O is, uh. What page are you? Waste disposal, one at table of contents. So we got these new.
Well, go to the.
Because they weren't there.
I think, I think those were altered or they were taken out.
They weren't in the. My, my assumption was that referring, the table of contents was incorrect before.
It was before, yeah.
Yeah.
So when you see red, things were either eliminated or changed or added.
I guess what I'm saying is we didn't actually change anything about septic waste disposal.
No.
Or we just.
No.
Corrected them, fact that they were missing from the table of contents.
Correct.
Right. Um, which is great, thank you. Uh, all right, in article four, section one, dwelling units. Um, oh, sorry. Actually, first in the land use table, yeah. So the change, you mentioned a lot of changes, a lot of the changes were there and. They seemed fairly. Certainly in the sense that we went from having a C U code to a C and a P code.
Right.
And I guess I was, I was hoping you'd explain that a little bit in terms of, you know, moving away from that single condition use concept to a.
Cause I found that confusing and in light of a lot of these new, uh. Definitions, new, uh, amendments here. It's a lot clearer to me, and I hope is to, C means code officer, P means planning board. Uh, planning board used to be C U conditional use. I mean, to me, it's a lot clearer when you look at it. I had a, a few problems in the past with C and C U and. I found P as a choose and refill is, and other towns I've worked with is, you know, the. I guess the clear way to run it. It doesn't take any power away from anybody. It doesn't change anything. It's just.
I see. You're just changing the, okay, it was.
Right.
The track changes are sometimes a little bit hard, but so it's just changing the letters used.
Right.
Not actually substantive.
For clarity, right?
Great, um.
A yes and no, still a yes and no.
And for the postscript, number one, that a planning board approval required for allowed uses within the restricted setback of protected resource.
Where are you?
Right here.
Talk about footnotes?
Yeah, on the land use table, or. No, I'm sorry.
Or.
It is article two. When land use table, the footnote on that.
I don't believe that that was changed.
Uh, it's not in the, so here's the original version.
Right.
And then in this one, we have.
Be there. Right here.
Right, this is still there, but this, this is. Just renewed, it says you edited it on April nineteenth. That's a planning board approval required for allowed uses within the restricted setback of a protective resource. That's not present, I miss.
Okay, I can get back to you, but again, a lot of this was integrating what, you know, we have. What we're, they're saying, I'll, I'll get back to you on that.
Yes, my question there was just whether that was a substantive change or simply maybe not clear. And sort of a small nitpick.
Yeah.
Just that it looks to me now like this is now a sub point of point one.
Right.
Whereas I'm assuming this, previously, this was not. Confined to the number one sub script, so.
Right.
Think we would want to bring the uh.
There's a lot of margin corrections and everything that need to be made. I had to focus on this, so.
No, I get it, ju- just because that.
Send me the list when you.
I can do that.
Get that done for the next meeting.
Could actually affect um, it, but it could, it could affect interpretation. All right, Article three.
Yep.
Set the setback table.
Yep. A lot of this was directly from their directives and from the North Star uh excerpts. So it, it basically, if you look at the, they used to be pretty much what you're looking at right there, okay? Acres and square feet. Um, this had to go in there to say, if an affordable unit or an auxiliary dwelling unit is there, what are the requirements for the uh, you know, and how it was supposed to be done?
Right.
So you go from a middle of um forty thousand square feet first, with each additional dwelling unit requiring an additional forty thousand square feet.
So what I wanted to, I guess, clarify there was um, are, will we say each additional? Are more than one additional unit allowed?
Yes, pretty much, yeah.
Okay, is that just under the affordable housing?
It's under the affordable housing. There was also a second one, uh manufactured mobile homes.
There can be more than two. Oh, yeah, more than two, I guess is mine, okay.
Depending on how much land there is there.
Okay.
And again, there can be, but it still has to meet setbacks and it still has to address all the um subsurface uh plumbing.
Water and septic.
So it, and I like, I can send these to you if they're too particular, but uh, point six. Um, also subject to other provisions or relaxations of standards allowed in other portions of this ordinance.
Right.
That felt somewhat vague to me, and it seemed to me like it was referencing section four two. Um, like, is that what it's referencing, or could we be more specific there, just because that's?
No, because I think this is an overall uh point that's put in there to say if there's something else in this ordinance that goes against what's in the new.
Okay.
That, you know, that might become something important.
Okay, that it still applies.
So, yeah, I mean, you, you look at something, I can't think of an example right now, but that might be in there and somebody might say, well, it's in the you know, land use ordinance that it's allowed, and then we have, they have to refer back to the pure state rule and, you know, do determination. Cause there will be things I missed, not perfect.
That comes as a shock.
Well.
So, four, one, C, uh, four, one, sorry, sorry. Four, one, C, there's a lot of points under that. This is the conversion or reconstruction of two or multifamily or non-conforming lots. Um, some small things, point six. There, it sort of looks like it's, it's any change in the structure shall be consistent with the character of the neighborhood and is it and leading to point seven, or was there supposed to be something else there? I just sort of a comment, like I worry a bit about enforcement with that because it's so highly subjective, but um, like we have other language in there like that. And if anybody has thoughts or wants to yell out, feel free.
Can you do that?
Well, that page is that? This is page thirteen, sorry, thirteen on the latest edited version.
Page fourteen on some other version.
Okay, uh, it is.
Okay, I got you. Conversion or reconstruction?
Yeah, for Article four, section one, C, six, and uh, number five. So number five says that adequate onsite parking areas shall be provided for a minimum of two vehicles for each dwelling unit.
Right.
We contradict this later in section nine, L two A, where we say that one uh, which is existing, it's not something we knew that we added, where we said that one parking space is sufficient if it is designed to be occupied by one person.
Changed. It's changed.
Are we gonna change the other instance too? I mean, it seems like we need to be consistent as well.
So the, what's the one that it's going against?
Is Article nine, let me track it down, nine, L two A. So general uses, general policy.
Right.
Not yet, sorry, I'm trying to get down to it, um. Article nine, general regulations in all, whereas that, that is page forty-five. Um, forty-five, lots of letters, so we go down to L. Um. Which is off-street parking requirements. And L two says minimum standards for off-street, off-street parking, A dwelling units. Sorry, so, um, so yeah, page forty-nine, forty-nine is ultimately the page we want.
Forty-nine?
Yeah.
Right.
So, right here, two spaces per unit except for units doesn't, designed to be occupied by only one person. In which case, one space should be provided.
Okay, well, this addresses something that's mostly concerned with affordable housing and auxiliary dwelling units. Because it used to say, you know, only two parking spaces or whatever. No off-street, you know, off premises parking. And that could be used to limit how many houses and how many dwellings are allowed. That's why they here, they call for a minimum of two per unit. That's the state, so I'll have to look at that, see if that.
Was coming from this, okay.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with our current one, like, I, I don't, but if it's the state, obviously we can't. And there, but it was an addition you made here for affordable housing specifically, which has its own parking requirement, so that's covered.
Um, I think this will probably be altered to follow the state.
Okay.
Because if you have a living, living unit and possible that it could be for, you know, for two.
Yep.
Then you gotta have a minimum of two anyways.
State, right, we don't have, we don't have choice over that.
Pretty much, yeah.
I wonder if that will create more non-conforming uses, or if we actually even have any of those. But, um, anyway, going back to Article four, way back on page thirteen. So four, one, C, um, this time I'm looking at point seven.
Seven, right, um, we don't have an academic district.
That was my question, okay. And this is, this was just a, that whole thing's gonna go.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Good. Point D, uh, well, whatever he is. Letter D, um, number three.
Right.
Um. I guess, does this does this come from the state as well? Because the minimum size, the minimum lot size for multifamily dwelling shall be the product of the number of dwelling units in the building times the town's minimum lot size requirements for a single family resident for the district in which the multifamily dwelling is located. Does this like effectively prohibit apartments? Would this make it impossible to have like senior housing because?
Encouraging. Um, because what it's saying is, you can't have a definitive minimum lot size. We had a mistake in our L U O before even this. You had to have a minimum of five hundred square feet to have a dwelling unit. Well, guys, we already passed something for tiny homes a year ago, which is four hundred twenty-five square feet, so that had to be corrected. And I think this corrects any other anomalies that come up to say, okay, you're gonna have how many units there, what's the plan? If you have that many units, this is what the minimum lot size has to be at minimum.
So I get that, it seems to me to be discouraging, like an apartment, the way I'm reading it, because it says that, say if I have a building. That means I need ten times as much land.
Be ten acres if it's a one acre minimum, or twenty acres if it's a twenty acre.
Right, so it's, say, ten and one as an example, ten year, ten dwelling units. If the minimum lot size in that uh zone is one, it would require ten acres, you'd have to have a ten acre plot to have a single apartment building. That seems to me to be both against sort of the spirit of this and also, like, I don't think we're setting out necessarily to prevent apartments, um.
I'd have to get to the explanation on that one, but.
Okay. Um, so that one, I'm gonna, I'll make a list of things that I'll follow up with you via email, but um.
So.
They just went through the land use ordinance, am I correct? They didn't go through like our mobile home ordinance?
No, no, no.
Cause we define a mobile home, anything with three mobile units on it. Manufactured housing is a mobile home park. That would be extinguished by this law, wouldn't it?
But what is changed is, is you still have mobile home parks. Okay, and you can have a lot of mobile homes in a park. You're gonna have things like we were just talking about now. Requirements for how many you can actually have on a, a lot, okay? So parks still exist, but what has changed with the new mobile home regulation is that mobile homes used to be not allowed in a lot of districts. Now, they describe, a mobile home is under manufactured housing, which is a lot more accepted in a lot of districts.
F. For you, you said, uh, you part, already partly answered this. Um, so we have a dozen, we have designated growth areas?
We have two designated growth areas, yeah.
Where are they?
Yeah, I had same question.
I'll get back to you on that.
I did, I did look at that.
Yeah.
It's like on a little map, it's like downtown Wayne, and then right around the North Wayne Dam. It was like a very small two chunks.
Designated growth area.
It's like in our comprehensive plan.
The village uh shoreline district, I think it is, that's one.
And where?
It's like, it looks like this, the little purple parts.
Okay, or urban Wayne in quotes.
Yeah.
Are we, and are we allowed to limit in that way according to the state's laws?
Limit what?
Uh, where, we're, we're limiting affordable housing to
Designated growth.
Designated growth area.
No, 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 that's for bonus points and things like that.
Oh, just, just to be eligible for the density benefits.
Right.
So they can, okay. So we are allowed to.
You know, your, your growth zones, like the village resident, uh, shoreline district, forty thousand square feet, that's the, that's the most giving that the town had. The more, you know, the less required acreage or square footage is more, you know, more to this, you know, being able to have more units and things. And remember, the overall rule that's, that's been put forth, if you can have, if you have or can have a single family dwelling unit on a lot, then you can allow, you know, auxiliary or affordable housing there.
Auxiliary dwelling unit you're talking, additional dwelling.
Additional.
Yeah, okay. Eighty, let's, let's use a preview, then we'll always get it.
Well, there's two differences.
Yeah, I know.
There's a lot of eighty.
There's accessory dwelling and there's.
Accessory dwelling, yeah.
F two, A and B, right, next, just the next point, um. These two definitions, um.
For housing and for own housing, yes.
For, right, for, 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 basically to qualify as affordable housing.
Um, this is to qualify them for the bonus.
Yes, to qualify for the bonus. It, it, these definitions are somewhat different than the definitions we have in um the definitions, part two, Article one B, page fifty-two, uh, there. So here we just, we specify that occupancy of all the units designated affordable in the development will remain limited to households at or below eighty percent of the local area median income. The other definitions to me seem more useful because they, instead of, this here says you can only have people of this income in the building. Which seems difficult to, the, the other definitions seem to me more practical because they specified that the cost
Right.
Shall be only thirty percent of the median income. And so I guess my thought is, should we be referencing that other definition? And the other thing is that they say that affordable, so I guess they're saying, they're saying that affordable housing has to be fifty-one percent.
Affordable to get the bonus.
Well, no, that's in the definitions.
Right.
This one does not say fifty-one percent, so which leads me to understand that to get the bonus, it has to be fully affordable units.
Pretty much, yeah.
That's correct, yeah. Okay, so you only get the.
This is directly out of their directives, okay?
Okay.
So there are gonna be ambiguities that we're not gonna be able to get around, and they know it, they're, you know.
I mean, can we, well, this, that one, I think we could get around, simply by using portion of the second definition specifying, instead of saying that occupancy of all the units should remain limited to households at a certain income, which I don't, to me, does not really make sense if you think it's ridiculous, how do you limit?
This is what they gave. This is what they gave.
But we also got.
The audit comes, if you have a builder that wants to come in and put in a multi-family or a multi-dwelling project.
Yes.
If they fit this definition, then they're allowed to put more units on than they normally would.
Right. I guess I'm saying, why, can, can we, or why could we not um include the a portion, the extended definition that we have later on in this document? Two, one B, that's uh, that um defines it as costing a portion of the median income.
Again, definitions are the definitions of affordable and auxiliary. This is more dealing with incentivizing builders or contractors to come in at these levels. And they argued this over at Reed Field when we went through this too, and certain things which they've laid out.
Okay, I, I mean, yeah, I don't, to me, I don't find that, that does not make sense to me. I, I probably will continue to particularly because if they're looking at this before they're occupied. Um.
Well, if they're gonna get the bonus.
You have to specify, there are no occupants, so you have to specify how will they limit it to households at a certain income.
What happens is, once they complete their developments, I've been through this before in other places. Then they, they're the ones that put together who gets the units. And that has to qualify under this, because they agreed to do that, put in ten units instead of eight. Once it's, once it's built, then they manage who comes in. And then there's some kind of way, state, or maybe we'll have something to do with it, where it's reviewed now and then, but affordable housing is a real tough thing. They set up the rules and then following up with it is not easy.
Isn't the state housing authority the ones that, that set those income limits?
Yeah.
Publics the, the limits, I don't know if they set them, you know, and then I don't know who, who uh, determines by the applicant, who measures that income, doesn't it? Income eligibility, I know I worked stating a housing authority, and, and basically you go in and you look at their pay stubs, you look at their uh, W twos and try and determine if they're eligible based upon the income that they represent.
Right.
There's.
So it's purely income-based, not cost of the actual units.
Right.
It's not based on the cost of the actual unit, interesting, but income.
Yeah, okay, all right, um, thank you.
There are housing cost limitations for main state, I haven't gone about it, but that's different.
But that's different.
That's different, okay. When you said, it's not based on the cost of housing. But that's true, this eligibility is based on, are they eligible based on their income?
Right.
Their income's only gonna afford a certain amount of. Mortgage.
Okay, right, right.
So.
So they could be, unlike with that second definition, they could be in there and paying sixty percent of their income, it would still be counted as the forty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
Well, it, it, no, no, I don't think I heard that. You said they could be only using sixty percent of their income and still be determined to be affordable?
Uh, as long, because this, if it's purely income-based, then they could be in there paying sixty percent of their income, and then it still counts as affordable. Because their income is still within those thresholds. It says nothing about how much of their income they're paying or the cost.
No, not much, it's just that, they take their income and they say, well, let's say they're making, and I looked at the income limits for Kennebec County, I can't remember. But as a household income, let's say it's fifty thousand dollars to be eligible, they can't be making over that and be eligible to purchase one of these properties. Doesn't matter what percentage of that, I guess, that, that, I mean, the qualifying, if they're getting mortgage. It depends on how much of their income they're using, the eligibility is just about how much they're making.
Right, okay. Um, which sort of goes into a second, separate, separate question, does the uh we say local area median income?
Mm-hmm.
Is that county level or?
They calculate that yearly.
County, okay, alright, I was just gonna say if it's.
I went to those charts, you know, that, one that we commented, you commented, where they gave you an explanation. You go to the main state housing chart and you look at what a family or the median income is, that's how they determine eligibility.
But in the whole county was my, great. Um, seems like it'd be problematic if it was just Wayne.
Yeah, but just Wayne, they wouldn't have enough data.
Yes, exactly. My apology that I'm into it, wear down people's patience, um. G.
I have beer after.
Professor Bates. G two, um.
Been taken out of that since your um version is um line two, other than resource protection, stream protection zones, that is deleted.
Okay, okay.
So what was the difference in that is if we allow a unit in a resource protection now.
Right.
So, yeah, number two, I was wondering if this should be referenced in that note under the size setbacks and spacing table. Let me, see if this is page fourteen. Yeah, so when we give these minimum lot sizes.
Yeah.
And we note here that we, we make a note about an exception for affordable housing. I guess I'm wondering, should there be a note here also referring to the exceptions for accessory dwelling units? Because if they're gonna put on a tiny, uh, if they're gonna put on an accessory dwelling unit, they can do that with the minimum lot size for a single family dwelling, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So that I get, that's what I'm wondering, is it, would it be helpful to note here that this is the minimum lots, this minimum lot size includes the right to build an ADU.
I think that's laid out, all, everything that follows. But put it down, take a look at it.
Okay.
We can, you know, revisit a lot of these at hopefully the public.
I ask you one more, I've read this four times, I still don't understand it, but probably I'll write it three, five more times. Let's say in R one right now, minimum lot size is forty thousand square feet, I think it's one acre, it says in there. Forty thousand now, but you said one acre, which is forty-three thousand five sixty, by the way, not forty, but that's alright. A little less than one acre. My question is, somebody wants to build, or I have two acres in town in R one.
Mm-hmm.
And I wanna build an additional dwelling unit, not an accessory, I don't think it makes any difference, do I have to have two acres? Cause you got two units. I must have two acres, I couldn't build that additional dwelling acre, uh, unit on a one acre lot, is that correct? Did I understand that correctly, I'd have to have two acres to do that.
Again, it comes down to, is it a accessory dwelling unit?
Additional, additional dwelling unit, I'm gonna put a mobile home behind my farmhouse. Um, nineteen thirty-five. Says in the ordinance, if I write, it doesn't matter what year it is, if it's a manufactured housing. Can I do that on one acre of land? If I minimum lot size is one acre, I've got, currently got a structure there, and I wanna add an additional dwelling in it. And I still haven't got that answer in my head.
I believe if you can meet the setbacks.
Sideline, you can't have an additional entryway.
And the septic.
Uh-huh.
Setback, setback from water.
Setbacks, water, sewer, yeah, I'd have to, no.
Well, it's also limited.
I'm not gonna do that tomorrow.
Maximum seven hundred square feet, correct?
Good weekend, huh?
Yeah, minimum.
Maximum seven hundred.
Maximum seven hundred square feet, right. Minimum of one ninety or whatever it is, right?
Yep.
No limit.
So, so I can do it on one acre, that isn't, but yet it's, but yet it says, I thought if, if you're, now, if you don't have, it's a vacant lot one. I own one acre in town, and I wanna put up two units on a two dwelling units.
Attached, separate.
Separate. Do I, can I do it on one acre, must I have two acres, it's a different proposition.
I believe you can do it, but you'd have to come to the planning board to justify it.
Oh God, don't do that.
Wouldn't the same standard apply? Wouldn't the same standard apply?
No, they have different standards, for on.
Different solve.
No, no, that had to do with zone, whether it's currently got a structure on it or not, or dwelling in, matter of fact, they're, yeah, it's totally confusing to me anyway, but that's me.
Hey, you're a smart guy.
No, no, no.
Can I ask a question jumping off of that, maybe we already went over it, but, so when it says C slash P? What determines whether it's the CEO or the planning board reviewing that?
Usually the first, CEO gets the first shot at it. Um, and if it looks different, difficult, controversial, or, you know, problematic. I would immediately refer it to the planning board.
Okay, and then that little like one subtext thing that was. So that, like, if it's like in a restricted setback, then it would go to the planning board.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So going down a little farther, no, fine, mine are all boring, uh, G two C. The owner most occupied, the single family dwelling is their primary legal residence.
Yep.
An accessory dwelling unit. Um, that basically means that if you're Airbnb and this home, you cannot then build an accessory dwelling.
Right.
Well, it means, what, what if you got a second home on the lake shore, that was, I'm gonna use that as a scenario.
Okay.
And it's not your primary residence, it's your secondary primary somewhere else. And you wanna build an accessory or an additional dwelling.
They can run out both, yeah.
Yeah, you can't do it, if I understood that correctly, but you can sell it to somebody. And call it their, and they weren't talking about it has to be a primary residence of the person that moves in. Uh, cause you know, you could have a tenant in that, additional be their primary, it wasn't really clear to me which person they were talking about.
Trying all the ways to get around it, so.
No, I think of all, because somebody will.
I mean, we just, you know, we do what the state gives us.
Yeah.
It's not clear for them, it won't be clear for us. Um, and like homestead, you know, rebates, like everything else, there's gonna be a way around everything. We just do the best we can to define what it is and.
But it does have to be a primary residence, it does state that the owner of the property.
Right.
It must be their primary residence in order to
Built, right.
Be eligible, and then it has to meet the other requirement.
Right.
Except, except back and all that.
Cause otherwise you actually have more mental space to drive the prices up even higher.
Exactly.
Side story for you, a lot of towns have looked to this to regulate Airbnbs.
Right.
Because that goes against this type of thing. My suggestion has been, and other code officers has been, when they go through this, is to really discourage that. Cause if you want this thing to go down in flames, start making rental units, you know, more restricted or whatever. That's something that should happen, Airbnb should be regu- regulated, but
Do it on its own.
Do it on its own, some other time.
Yes, um, maybe we should, but. Uh, G, um, proper ingress and egress shall be provided to from the accessory dwelling unit. I'm just being, I mean, nippy, but do we have any definition of proper ingress and egress, or is that? We do?
They're building codes.
Okay, well, that's what it would be.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, um. H, the applicant shall provide verification that the proposed accessory dwelling unit will be connected to an adequate supply of potable water and to a wastewater disposal system found by the code enforcement officer to be in compliance with applicable requirements of the main subsurface flow block.
Right.
Right. Compost and toilets, do they fly, can they?
Probably not, because the, there's, they made these uh subsurface rules a lot more strict this year. And it's, it's very, that's, it's almost impossible, you know, it, it pretty much requires a subsurface system to treat.
Okay, and that's.
They don't, we don't allow holding, holding tags anymore, that's the first time.
On a state level, if ever.
State level.
State level, okay.
Most of grandpa.
So probably not is the answer.
Not.
Okay, and it's not, and it's not something that we have local jurisdiction over.
Well, that's state code, I mean, I'm the plumbing, well, licensed plumbing inspector, and so I'm the one supposed to enforce that. So they're pretty strict with that, um. They're very much encouraging because of the new technologies that the Elgin units that you can use now, the treating, there's water treatment, things can be used now to, you know, so subsurface is allowed in much smaller or fragile places. So, I mean, there are ways to get it done, so no longer can you put in a holding tag to hold three thousand gallons and promise you're gonna pump it every three months, it won't be allowed.
I guess I'm, yeah, I'm thinking that uh, particularly with the tiny house situation, people might want compost and toilets for them rather than giving them a septic.
I don't believe that, you know, I'll go back to the, the subsurface rules, but I don't believe that for a first time installation, that's allowed.
Okay, and I, and I guess my, my follow-up question is there is that, is that um like, is it a state level, or is it something we have any jurisdiction?
Well, it's a state level, we can make that, that's again, coming back to, you can make it more, you know towards the, the issue that you're dealing with. So, I mean, you might wanna try that, but you're not gonna be able to go against the state rules. Um, that's under, you know, the Fire Marshal's Office, uh, Health and Human Services, there's the rules, and I can give you the book on that too, so.
Okay.
Um, and you're setting yourself up for my code officer's nightmare.
Alright, yeah, uh, we can, I'll put that in as a follow-up as well. K, no use to mention all other variants shall be granted for the construction establishment of an accessory dwelling unit. I'm curious, is that, is that also part of the state?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, say, no one.
It basically says, we, no variances of any kind will be granted. Um.
It was some ten percent allowance, so.
There's that, and to met, right, and the dimensional ones is later, um. But yeah, my, my thought there was only like, you know, we totally bar ourselves from variances, are we?
No, this is just to deal with the the two thousand three rules that we're trying to.
Right, no, I, I understand.
And, you know, regular development, when you're not, you know, working, you know, trying to expand the amount of units on a property or thing. You're going by the regular rules, you're not, that's not gonna hit you.
Right, right, right. Do you wanna, do you wanna go?
Yeah, I just wanna ask a question about our other ordinances with regard to installation of mobile homes on foundation and stuff, is that? Is that?
It's under your mobile home ordinance.
Yeah, but is that, this doesn't supersede those requirements, does it?
It, no, it really doesn't because if you look in the state requirements and other towns, um you know, it does say that you can uh have it does supersede a lot, but it does allow for, you can require skirting, you can, you can acquire that it, it, you know, meets the
And it's similar in nature to surrounding area, but, but we've already got stuff in place.
Right.
Uh, about how to put footings in, how to pour foundation.
Move back, that's, yeah, that's not just us, that's, that's a state building code.
Okay, I don't know about that, but maybe.
Believe it.
Yes, okay. So those are still applicable, is what I'm hearing.
They are still.
In your opinion.
Right.
Good, so.
Point, uh, three, um, below that. Uh, for residences excluding mobile homes of up to three dwelling units in zone R one, then the lot size shall be increased by ten thousand square feet for each dwelling unit over one.
Where are we now?
Sorry, page sixteen. Three.
These are, these are what are existing right now, there was no change in it right there.
Some of putting it in, there'll be stuff that'll.
It seems to conflict with the forty thousand, is what I'm. Andy, where are you?
Page uh sixteen.
Yep.
Three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, it's, it's not too far off from the new regulation, forty thousand.
Ten thousand and forty thousand?
No, ten thousand for each, right?
Right.
Each dwelling unit over one.
So if you have one table, we say for each additional dwelling unit, it's forty thousand.
I'm not saying the same page, so you, he's, he's got a different.
Sort of seems like they're noting that here too in this review, uh. I can give you the section, um, sorry, it is article four.
Okay.
Section one.
Yep.
Or sorry, no, article four.
Yep.
Section three. After height. Section two was height. So if you get article four, there's a lot of.
A lot of.
I think that it is page nine.
I thought I had the latest.
Here, sorry, page twenty-one on this one.
We'll look at that.
Okay, it's, yeah, it's just the ten thousand number seems to be in conflict with the forty thousand, so here.
Okay, residences including mobile homes up to three dwelling units, zone R one, which is residential. Minimum size shall be increased by ten thousand square feet each dwelling in over one, yeah, I don't think we can do that.
It just seems in conflict with the um size table before that says each additional dwelling unit requires.
I don't think we can require more for the accessory. And it's excluding, and it's excluding mobile homes. And you can't do that either.
Anyway, alright, so yeah, I'll.
In this green all, this is not applicable anywhere, this was changed. Anything in green was changed, wasn't it?
It's changed, but it's still there. See, I can, so, the digital one's nice, you can go to the final and see, final's still there.
It shouldn't be the one.
Make a note.
Uh, yes, alright, I will mark that one for following up.
Good, good time. You can't do that, you can't exclude the mobile homes.
No.
So.
Number four below that.
What is the reserve?
In case something comes up, put there, that has to do with this, it's just there as a space holder.
Okay. Cool, I'll tell you when. Alright. Um, yeah, alright, I think everything, I think the other ones mostly, so article nine L two, this is where we say the one parking space. So either that or the other one will have to change, I mentioned that, I think. Tiny, so part two, article one B definitions. Just a couple.
Article one B.
Yes, I will find you the page.
People, we got different kinds of.
Definitions and construction of language.
Yeah, it's nearly, and. So I mean, well, part two, I meant is kind of near the end.
Part two.
Part two.
Article one B. Enforcement Administration.
Yeah, definitions, everything you have in your ordinance, that's be defined.
Article, part two, article one, um. I got page fifty-two. Yeah.
Fifty-two, you think, huh? I think it's, uh. Need tabs. You need a computers, can you buy us all a computer? I think.
Yeah, you're there.
No, and that.
Okay, now you're, yeah, you're in the right section, just go back to A.
Yes.
As you said, the red printed one. Fifty-seven in the latest edition, alright.
Small things here, if we go down to tiny homes.
Down to tiny homes.
P, yes.
What about it?
It's a bunch of pages down, sorry.
What are you looking at definitions, they're alphabetical, so tiny homes would be on page.
Um, space.
R S P.
It's alphabetical, so just keep.
Yeah, I know, I got that one.
Sixty-five on the original one.
Right.
Tiny home, page seventy.
C, um. So number C, it looks like there's some.
That there's a. That was something we passed, alright, where, where's?
That doesn't exceed any dimension allowed for operation on.
Right.
On the way, this title. And what is, what is this title? Is that supposed to be there? That's.
Yeah, that's all right.
What are your thoughts?
See, tiny homes are defined, uh, by main law under the Department of Motor Vehicles. They're supposed to be mobile, to be moved at any time, so they have to be built to, and I gotta get the title number in there for you.
Okay, so that's.
This is what, this is what our rules were before that passed.
Right, so the.
Needs.
Needs an edit.
I haven't, you know, again, I haven't looked at the whole overall thing, we hired somebody and paid them a lot of money to do it.
Hmm.
I've just tried to fit in what.
What you thought given in it.
Um, all right, and you just answered my second question, is that.
There's gonna be.
If they, they have to be on a chassis, they have to be movable.
They have to be movable, but they don't have to be on a chassis. I mean, that's the way they were defined, that they have to be able to come down I ninety-five and be placed, okay? But once you place them, they don't have, I believe it's changed, I don't believe you have to have them on the chassis.
Okay, but that doesn't apply to all accessory dwellings.
No, that's, that's just tiny homes.
That's just tiny home.
Um.
Also does not exceed seven hundred square feet in size.
And do we, now that we have the ADU.
Four hundred square feet.
Regulations which apply not to these tiny homes.
Right.
Do we still have tiny homes?
We still do, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anything that applies only to tiny homes still?
Yeah, they're defined under the main state Department of Motor Vehicles.
Well, right, 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 I guess, but I mean, is there a place where a tiny home is allowed, but an ADU is not? Is that?
I'd probably not.
I guess that was what I'm.
Probably not.
Yeah, there are different dimension.
But.
Four hundred to seven hundred.
Okay.
Okay.
Well. Right, but it, it's, it seems to me, and this is not really germane, we don't, it seems to me like at this point, if you example, ha- have a tiny home that is six hundred square feet, you can just say, well, it's not a tiny home, it's an ADU, and I can do the same thing.
I think you should.
I'm not even, I'm not sure we need a tiny home. Definitely anymore, but I don't know, I don't, I don't think we need to take it out.
It was a step that the state took to get to the point we're at now, it's giving little things.
Right.
So.
That is all I have.
Just not include a trailer.
Give me that list so I can go through it.
I will get a cleaned up one and.
A lot of it's probably just editing, but I, you know, I need professionals to go back to that, but you know, again, you're gonna find other things that aren't totally right, and that wasn't my job to go through the whole thing, that's general codes thing.
No, and I appreciate that you.
And, uh, the other thing you guys should know is you're not doing this in vain. I'm getting calls three or four times a week for people that wanna put in, uh, you know, new dwelling units that couldn't be for.
Um. Great, well, thank you, and I appreciate you doing all the heavy listening. Um, what, is that, do other people have notes?
No, good catchers, and it reminded me of my thesis chair in grad school, so, um, well done, Andy. So, where you go from here is I'm hoping to see you, uh, find the application complete, move it on to a public hearing. For us to do the public hearing, we have to notify, notice it in the KJ, uh, at least two weeks ahead of time. So the earliest we could do it would be two weeks hence, I think it's the twenty-third would be that Friday. But we have to get it done quickly, uh, because we're up against the plan, uh, select board holding their last meeting, I think that Tuesday, so it, I'd probably have to look at either that Friday or that Monday.
So it has to happen before our next regularly scheduled meeting is.
Yes.
Point, okay.
And after this one and that one, I will probably cancel the next scheduled one.
All right, so you're, you were talking about the twenty-third?
Is that a Friday? What's two weeks?
Twenty-third is a Thursday.
Okay, then it's the twenty-fourth? Or the following Monday?
Uh.
It is Memorial Day.
Yeah, Memorial Day, Mondays.
Yeah.
It's a good day, we'll all be up.
I am.
We need a quarter.
I, I am gone from the twenty-fifth onward, possibly that Friday as well. Um. Until early June.
Can you do it?
I can do it that Thursday, the twenty-third. Um, it, it depends when I will be in, uh, on airplanes for like.
How many can make straight?
Which day?
Which day?
Which day?
That, Friday, what's that day?
The day twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Is the twenty-third not an option?
Is that two weeks, say?
It's two weeks exactly from today.
Twenty-third would be a better day.
Yeah, but I think he needs two weeks to know.
That's not notice.
I'm gonna give notice, yeah, you'd have to give it today.
Yeah, we have to give it today.
Okay. Um, well, then, yeah, a day when every, I could, I mean, I will be, if you do it twenty-fourth, I'm at, um, I might be able to do twenty-fourth, it's hard for me to guarantee, if you do it like after the twenty-eighth, I will no longer be in a plane. Um.
Select board meetings on Tuesday. How many can make it, I mean?
On Friday?
On the Friday, raise your hand, we have four, don't worry about it.
Okay. And I'll, maybe, uh, yeah, I don't entirely have my travel, when it's locked down, but.
And you can do Zoom on a phone.
So, all right, yeah.
Not from airplane.
Well, again.
As long as I'm. Done it.
Okay, I can, I can do that. Um, so this is the way I'm gonna say. All right, so the plan, so the plan is for the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
Six thirty?
For a public hearing.
Yeah.
Who's gonna show up on Friday? Who's gonna show up Friday before? More than ever. Maybe nobody, not, is that what you want? Not really. All right, but we've got to meet the, we gotta meet the deadlines of them.
Do you think people would be more likely to show up on Monday evening?
Can, will we still have time before the planning board meeting?
On Monday morning, it's actually the holiday though, that seems.
Yeah.
Better holiday.
Oh, yeah.
I won't, I won't be here, but I feel like I would not necessarily wanna.
Can you notice it today? I can, I can get to noticing tomorrow.
We count today, what's today then? Nine?
Why, why not the twenty eighth, what was the one? Um, with the twenty, Tuesday, the twenty eighth.
I think that's when the.
That's when the select board meets.
They meet on the twenty-first. They're not, they're not meeting on the twenty.
Where is?
They met, they met the seventh, and they meet the twenty-first. But they're not leaving on the twenty, it's not, they're not scheduled to. Just.
Do we have to meet before the select board, is that what?
Yeah, we have to decide before the select meeting.
And they're not meeting, and they're meeting on the twenty-first.
Do we have, uh, is it on the website, can we?
So we're in a dilemma.
Can we confirm?
I can't do the vision.
Um. My data won't work, anyway, what's the, uh? I do not have any internet access.
Well, you can look at it.
It's the twenty-first.
Will that mean that they'll meet on the fourth, for that though? Like the fourth of June?
I just wanna.
Yeah, that probably makes sense, they meet twice a month.
I have the one month.
The fourth, you mean?
Could we meet between the twenty-eighth and the fourth, is that what you're saying? It's still.
That won't be enough.
Won't be enough what?
It's not gonna be enough time.
Or what?
There's not time now. It's a. Is there enough time now?
Yes.
Wait, we have to, we have to visit to the select board, and then they have to meet.
Right.
We have to have a public meeting.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have to have a public hearing for the select.
And then we have to vote on it.
Right.
Bring it to them.
And we have to pass it.
Right.
And then it goes to the select board.
Right.
Does anyone have internet?
I do.
Can you confirm when the select board meeting?
Advertise, thank you.
Yeah, you get a public notice and the kind of big journals are still open.
And so the twenty-first is.
We'd never make the twenty-first.
We can't, we can't.
Can't make.
Twenty-first is no way, right.
Well, if that's, there is a meeting, select board meeting the twenty-first?
Trying to confirm.
Yeah.
Well, I can only meet on the sixteenth, so if you just look at the calendar, go over two weeks, right?
And then the sixteenth?
Yeah.
The April?
Yes.
The little thirty of the fourth, twenty, the twenty eighth.
They just met.
They just met the other day.
Yeah. Is there no, that.
Wait, I can see the community calendar where it's.
We go up to, um.
Show them where you go.
Boards and committees.
Yep.
And then select board, I just click on, click on select.
Okay.
Stupid, that should not be like.
Okay.
But it is another thing. Um, select board meeting schedule. Year twenty-three, twenty-four. No, I, I know, it's not intuitive.
Good. May seven, may twenty-first. Right, so if it's the twenty-first, then we've got more time.
So we could cancel it for.
No, May twenty.
Yeah.
It's already the night.
Twenty-first.
So. First time the select board can take this up is June fourth, if you have to have, if you're trying to give notice, isn't that right?
That's.
I'm bad at math, but I think that's right.
So we could meet, not on Memorial Day again. Could meet the week after.
And so where does that, what else chip, if we don't get it before the select board until June fourth?
Done.
That works, or no, that means it doesn't work?
June fourth?
Yes.
That would work.
That works, we get it before the select board, June fourth.
June fourth meeting. Thank you.
So, um. Wait, wait, no, sorry, I'm not saying that's our meeting, that is when the select board meets.
Mm-hmm.
So. Um.
We could meet the twenty eighth through the thirty, thirty, oh, twenty eighth there.
Twenty eighth since thirty-first?
I mean, thirty first is a Friday, but.
Do you have the twenty eighth, twenty ninth, the thirtieth, and the thirty-first?
It's a.
Can we do the thirtieth?
Sure.
The regular Thursday, is the last center available? They have something going on Thursdays and we don't meet.
Oh, yeah.
Chip, do they have, uh, something here on the Thursday we don't meet?
No, we, we trump them, so.
We do, okay.
The thirtieth.
It's up to you, yep, to you all, I will not be here, I can, I mean, I can try to connect by phone, but.
What is his phone?
Okay.
Thirty.
Thirty, and you all can make it because I cannot, it could be difficult to connect through.
No worries.
Through the Chinese firewall, so.
I did business when I was in, um, Shanghai.
Did you have a VPN? When?
On Tom, I think, available, he's very usually, I don't know.
Yeah.
I had to, I've always had to use a VPN to get any Google services there.
All right, so what, what date you got him up with?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty, thirty.
All right, let's go with it, need a motion to close the public meeting, and then a motion to meet on the thirtieth, public hearing.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Meeting.
Meeting, and we meet on the thirtieth.
Um. What, do you, did you want to bring up, uh?
Uh, I thought, sure, um.
As a general, we have, yeah, with, and your other, other business?
You go, go get a vote.
Well, though.
Close the meeting and schedule it.
If we have another.
Issue.
If we have another issue.
To discuss?
Yes.
Yeah. After you do that.
Then we will vote to close the meeting.
We're just closing the public meeting on this issue.
On this issue, okay.
Okay, but we will be adjourned yet.
Right.
I make a motion to close the public meetings.
I second that motion, all in favor.
All right. We need a motion to.
Motion to schedule the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion to schedule the public hearing on June fourth?
No, thirty.
Due, uh, thirty, thirty May, excuse me, thirty May.
Six thirty PM?
Six thirty PM, eighteen thirty.
I won't be there, so somebody's gotta take my place.
Eddie.
Second the motions. All is clear.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, and so Chip will not be with us.
My daughter's getting married.
Oh, wow. Are you okay with us having a meeting without?
If you're okay without having me, God bless.
It's never gonna be the same without you.[1592.54]